Yes, we are live.
All right. All right, it's 12:16. We are back in regular session from executive session. Item number 13, which was a consideration of approved litigation settlements or agreements to Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, and the opioid litigation. Matthew, what say the court?
I am asking for a motion second and vote to authorize a county judge to sign any all documents necessary for the settlement of claims against Walgreens, CVS, and Walmart, the Texas opioid multi-district plaintiff.
What makes that look?
You got a motion through Greg. Second Leon, any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. In the matter of numbers 13 and 14, which was, they were considered concurrently. Let's say the court.
Fourteen to fifteen.
Excuse me, fourteen to fifteen, yeah.
Make a motion that we contend that we operate our county and our attorneys to continue negotiations.
To negotiate, draft, and circulating any agreements or documents necessary pretty all to consider.
Second, you're also just like.
To the advantage of the county.
But we'll need a motion second vote on four ten and fifteen.
You will do it separately or together?
I will be separate.
As a matter of number four, let's say the court.
I need your section.
Greg made a.
I read the next motion.
Wait, when you said.
Greg made the motion. David?
Second.
Made the second. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Matter of number fifteen. That's right. Once again, Matthew, if you would.
We are asking for a second vote to approve our outside counsel in the county attorney's office negotiating, drafting, and circulating with the applicant an agreement for economic development incentives.
Matthew?
Got a motion from Greg. Second from David. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. In the matter of. Where are we next?
The only other thing with the executive session, I don't think.
Was that number twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty-five. Yeah. Recommend the court either pay no action tabled.
I make mostly tabled.
You have a motion to table. From Greg, second from David, to table. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. I think we have finally reached the end of this agenda. Do you have a motion to adjourn? Got one from David, get a second from Greg. All in favor, say aye. You are officially adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Good morning, everybody.
Morning, morning, morning.
Mad Dog, it's doggone good to see you there, brother. How are you today?
I'm good. You're good too?
Good, good, good. Judge Chambers.
Sir.
Good to see you this morning, sir.
I'm welcome too.
Thank you so much for being here with us. Will Carter. Hey, good to see you too there, bro. All right, how's Dr. Bavin doing?
You're well.
Is he still in Washington?
Rep. for all the reasons.
Oh, Lord. Okay, I know he's got his hands full. Okay. All righty, well, it is the regular meeting, Commissioner's Courts, Liberty County, Texas, July the 25th, the day after the 24th, which was Greg Arthur's birthday, by the way, that he doesn't want anybody to know about it, but we, we almost got a cake for him, but we had to call in Fire Marshal Huggum Milder to see if we have enough fire extinguishers to take care of it. Anyway, it's about nine oh six, nine oh seven. And if this calls me in order, we do have a court established that can show that Commissioner Korbowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire present, Commissioner Wilson is with us online by way of Zoom. And if this time we would all rise, Will Carter, if you would, please come up and lead us in our pledges.
Do I make the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which is sent to God, to the soul, to the Jesus. And to the Texas flag, honor. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, under God, for one.
And if y'all would, please pray with me this morning. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We, as we always do, we thank you for all the wonderful opportunities you give us in life. And you give us all the wonderful blessings you give us, your grace and your mercy. Lord, your knowledge that you pass on to us, your wisdom. Lord, for us to make the right decisions that are not just only pleasing to you, but also helpful to others. Lord, that's our goal, is to always be able to take care of one another, as you've always taken care of us. Lord, please be with those that, friends of ours that are sick. Lord, please be with Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Fire Marshal Huggum Milder, and and our assistant auditor Angela Vasselli, if you would, Lord, is that you watch over them and bless them and and with your healing powers, Lord, that you place your hands on them and grant them the relief they need so that they can move forward and and have a wonderful life in service to you. Lord, please be with our first responders. Right now, Lord, I know that we're under a burn ban. And as you know, Lord, it, we do depend on the rain and and I've always said before, I might cuss a cow, Lord, but I will never cuss the rain. I guarantee you that. Just one of those things. But right now, we could sure use some to to bring things back. Lord, please be with the the farmers that need the the rain, that so they crop send, so folk can be fed. And Lord, as we go through this meeting today, please instill in us the wisdom that you've so wonderfully granted us, that you blessed us with, that you've given to us through so many years of your teaching. And Lord, please forgive us where we failed you. Please forgive us from any sins. We ask these things in Jesus' most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Well, all righty, y'all. We have a not just extremely lengthy agenda this morning, but it did turn into one. Actually, there's Matthew and Catherine knows that there is a little portal here about some executive sessions stuff, so we'll probably be going off into that shortly. But right now, are there any notices or proclamations? There by not hearing any. Diddy, I haven't heard one yet. Okay. Any public comments today? Haven't heard no one sign up thus far. No, no public comments? Good Lord, I guess, you know, really, it, I mean, you've been working on all kind of IT stuff. You need new tennis shoes yet. How about that? Not yet. Okay. All right. Next item is a declare conflicts of interest. Are there any items on the agenda of which any commissioners?
I'm agreeing from item twenty-five.
Twenty-five. For twenty-five for Bruce. And number ten for David. Okay, body fine. All right, let's move right along to the consent agenda. Dwayne, would we have any add-ons today?
I have one budget. I have an add-on. It's for shares for them. They're saving thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in ancient territory for vehicle. Make a budget limit to increase their incomes and to increase shares for capital island lakes on thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Anything else you think of him?
I'm going to refer to the agenda with the addition of the way added.
Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve with the noted additions. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven for Mr. Brown, our Texas collector. How are you doing this morning, there, brother, Rick?
I'm good.
I guarantee you the afterwards probably wore you out last night.
I felt like I was on the mound and in the dugout in in the basement there for a while.
I figured you were running right along beside old King Tuck.
I just kept going back to the kitchen and getting some more refreshment and then come back in. But it looked like it was like silence until that last inning, and it just kind of opened up.
Yeah.
It was entertaining. That's what I like. I don't care if they went loose, just so they keep answering to the last bit.
Well, it was interesting. I guarantee you that.
It was enjoyable.
How's everybody over in your office now? Everything back to normal somewhat?
I think we're, we made it through. I think it was the wisest move to shut down when we did because we had no more cases that spread. And we actually, everybody showed up for work on Monday. So I think it had its run, and it was very elements of it, but it spread pretty quickly, you know, from one to the other, kind of like hoof and mouth disease. I think it's spreading pretty quick.
Yeah.
And but some of the earlier ones, it looked like you just wrapped it. I mean, before it was over, we had six out of our office, you know, were showing signs and tested. So it stopped there. And then everybody was able to kind of get refreshed. And and no one really had a serious deal. And in talking to the clinic, which most of them went to, they say, I mean, it seemed to be a milder version of some of the early outbreaks we had fifteen years ago. So
Right.
that was encouraging. And it is kind of a diluted deal, or else our resistance grew up or something. So I think it was the right thing to do. And again, you did, we appreciate that the policy was still there for my employees to use. But they do understand that even though they were asked to stay at home, they had to be ready to come in because we kept feeling in the Dayton office running. So we we actually oversat them, who could go back in. So it's kind of standing ready, ready to go in. When you did, we just need to shut down the delivery office.
So that's what we do.
It worked. Yeah, it worked.
It worked. All righty. Well, number seven's all yours.
Yeah, today is my quick inquiry each year through some legislatures, probably as long as I've been in office, that we had at least twenty hours of continued education. I think this year I actually made made some extra, and which you can just carry over ten, instead of twenty. So that's all that is, just for clarification. And my time is playing this from August one, when I started to July thirty-first. So I had to complete it in that time of year.
Good deal.
That's all it is. The other stuff's just extra.
All right, this is information only.
Yes, it is.
No reason really for any action on this, to take an action. Do I have a motion to take no action?
You must take no action.
Bruce, second. Greg, take no action. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, there, brother, Rick. And don't sit down too long or sit like, as I say, because you got some more coming.
Okay, can I ask something real quick, someone will have to please. Seven is in a consent agenda item. We had already accepted after our vote. Did we want to move that to the regular agenda?
Just more or less for information only. That was it.
Okay, I don't have any way to record it, but when we've already voted on it, I guess.
Okay.
Superfluous vote.
Sure. Is that like a Philadelphia pause?
I sound like.
Okay, gotcha. Number eight, regular agenda, from our friends over at Land Barter. Consider approved bids on delinquent tax properties as follows. Ennis, bid number six five two seven four twenty-five hundred. Nizami, bid number six eight two six zero for a thousand. Tiarina, bid number seven five six seven four for thirty-eight ninety-two fifty-six. And Nizami, bid number six oh one three eight for five hundred dollars. And the very last one is Ennis, bid number six five three six seven for twenty-five hundred dollars. Now, the bidder has pulled this one. Is that correct, Rick, on that last one?
Yes.
Number five is.
Yes.
Number five has been pulled?
Yes.
Okay.
The bidder withdrew his data.
Ninety-five. So we're gonna pull that one off of there. If commissioners, y'all have an opportunity to look at these others.
Yeah, as always, I look at these. I'm looking at accepting number two and number three. Number four is in U River. We've just made several buyouts out there and really don't want.
Yeah, we're buying on that.
So busy completely. Number one, from Land Barter, I'm suggesting us not just take it off of the list and vote on number two and three as approval. I'm making that motion on number two and three to accept.
Second.
For the final number one? Yeah, I got out this morning, it was highlighted that we had a higher bid, thirty-one hundred dollars, Mr. Brown, introduced me to the bidder this morning outside the courtroom, and he's very interested. And we're going to have a bid off between the two bidders to be fair. But but obviously, our our goal is to get as much money for our clients' hostages.
You sure, right? All right, we got all this figured out. Okay, we have a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second, Greg to approve. As noted, if there are any further discussion? Being none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number two, from Judge Chambers. Come on up here and visit with us. This consider and discuss the needs of Liberty County Law Library and approve and assign a county office employee to manage your Liberty County Law Library, including the ability to negotiate contracts and purchase equipment and all supplies necessary with law library funds in order to provide a functioning law library, used by the public and attorneys for research purposes. And I remember back about twenty sixteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. I mean, this all of a sudden was like, hey, Judge, free throw, you got it.
That's right.
Yeah. It was. It was three-point, a long shot. Yeah. But you took it, you ran with it, did a great job. And it, and what do you want to do now that we're looking at it?
Well, if you would just allow me to negotiate, renegotiate, or talk to Westlaw or any other contracts we have now associated with the law library, to see what we got, to maybe renegotiate them. That's all I want right now. And then I'll come back to you and say, here's my God.
Okay.
With regard to cost. And it may also include some equipment. But again, I don't know if you want to give me a blanket, a credit card or not, but I don't know if you want me to come back to you for that also. Would that be the proper way to do it?
I don't know. There's an altar back there behind you. He's sharpening his knife. Yeah.
I was either going to mention, I was basically going to mention whether either the fees or price expansion.
Yeah.
Lower the filing fee then?
Yeah, I mean, no, I'm just building up cash here.
Right. Well, I guess I should have started out at the beginning. This whole law library fund is funded by a thirty-five dollar filing fee, the county clerk charges, and the district clerk's on a sparring civil lawsuit that anybody files with the county. There's thirty-five dollars in tax checks, part of the filing fee, and it can only be spent for, it goes in a certain fund, and it can only be spent for certain things associated with the law library. So that's where it comes from. And this isn't asking for any money that's not already allotted.
Just off the top of my head, I mean, it's run at the depths of years, you know, I think now, some forty, a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, so. I want to make a point. In twenty nineteen, which twenty twenty-one was the legislative session, they made changes to all the civil filing fees. When they did that, they changed that one line item on the law library from the commissioners consented it, because we had, we had taken it down to thirty, if you remember. And and they set it at thirty-five, and I don't think we have a choice on it. I think every county in the state has to charge thirty-five for every, you know, civil case filed regardless. I don't think we get an option on that. So.
I know what it will hurt. It's just cash or juice.
It is. And it's probably because that thing has been sitting over there idle, and we haven't been using it properly. I think it's going to take a while. And it's probably going to have a big, you know, ballots for a while. But for the moment, I mean, we've been paying for, at least as far as I can tell, the subscriptions have still been paid for. It needs new computers, it needs a new copier, you know, maybe some paper and stuff.
They need some doors and stuff in there.
Maybe, but that might be something I do separately. But the, you know, the bottom line is, is there should be sufficient funds to get the law library up and running. And let's do it pretty quick. Y'all just need to tell, the law says under Local Government Code three twenty-three, Matt, I hope, on the law library, that if you don't have a librarian, you have to appoint an employee to be responsible for it. And they work with the auditor to supply and keep it up and running. So that's my understanding of the law.
Hey, Tommy?
Yes, sir.
What would you suggest, like eight, five, five days a week, or Monday through Monday to Wednesdays and Fridays, part-time employee? What are you talking there?
Well, traditionally, it's been some, somebody that worked here at the courthouse that would check, check on it, if not every day, you know, every other day or something like that. But I can come back maybe with that, that proposal, say. I just want some authority from you, and some okay for you to start getting these things lined out. Like, say, Wes, what?
Yeah, I think it was a recommendation here, that you just come back and present up a deal, what we were hoping to bring that law library up today.
Yes, okay, that'd be good.
And I'll make that motion, that we want to provide you to evaluate the whole thing, have a representation of what we need to bring some of our work up there.
Yes, okay, that's what we did last time. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Got a motion from Greg, a second from David. To basically turn Judge Chambers loose and get this thing prayed down. How about that?
It's a rare occasion.
Yeah.
Not to ask Dwayne, but this is a case of we got more money we, you know, spend, right?
Well, that might be. It doesn't bother anybody. So you have to appoint someone to be in charge of it. It's the way the law.
I think for you, they had a attorney, law attorney, or something. I mean, you guys know. It was that. Only a thirty-thousand-dollar debt running in there that just apparently.
It's straightened out. Yeah.
Maybe the bad words said. Too much money.
Leon?
Yeah, Miss Lee?
Yes, sir.
The judge indicated like when a civil lawsuit is filed, there's a thirty-five thousand, I mean, thirty-five dollar law fee, a company is at, and that's specifically for the law library, correct?
Yes, sir. It's a designated charge that the state set up. And after they changed it in twenty twenty-one, I don't think we have a lot of leeway with it anymore, is the way I read it. But Matt can look at that and make sure.
Is there any way that you could possibly give us off-the-cuff figure when Judge Chambers comes back on how much thirty-five dollar fee we're bringing in for the law library?
I think that our estimate is in the fifty thousand, sixty, is it forty? It's not, you know, it's not a huge amount, but between my office and Delia's office, probably forty-ish a year is what we're putting in.
The judge could, those things be also utilized for employment of the individual?
Yes, yes, yes. There are certain things you can't do. You can't build a building. Oddly enough, but you can't, you can acquire space. I believe you pay rent. I think we talked about that, unfortunately, rent. You can, you can do certain things, yes, pretty well spelled out. And other things you can't do. But yes, you can, you can pay somebody to, to check up on it, keep it updated, things like that, keep the equipment running and things like that.
Could you add somebody, okay, say, to the district clerk's office, or the county clerk's office, and say, seventy-five, fifty, and Saturday come down that fund to take care of the law library and the other?
Not to. We've got a lot of money in it now, but we can deplete it real quick.
The reason I say, you could, you know, part of the salary come out of the, that fund, and then the rest, they don't, they don't need somebody five days a week, probably. But they can work really, we're doing that, they work for the other department the other two days. And but they would still be available in case something come up those two days.
I think one of the things that, it used to be that the the local bar was involved, and there was a committee and other stuff when it was initially set up. I don't need think you need that person anymore. But you could maybe have some employee, this employee who's supposed to, you know, like buy paper for it, put paper, maybe pay them an extra couple hundred a month or something like that. You could do something like that, I think, without depleting the money.
Or I could send Erie Edison by your office. Complaining with the law library. So what about, real quick, and then I'll leave. I thought about, well, why don't we charge less for the filing fee? Why don't we charge a half, you know, cut costs, you know, good tax cutting or a cost-saving measure. And I don't think we can cut the cost. I think it's like a mandatory fee. But I'll look into that. I'll look into that. If we can reduce the cost, I'll bring that to you also.
All right, all right. We have a motion in a second to allow Judge Chambers some, some leeway in solving the problem of this. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, let me ask one more question.
Yeah.
A lot of times, you know, the attorneys are going there, they'll do their studying or research. And Judge Chambers, would, they need to make copies of things. Would we be responsible for providing that copy, those, those the paperwork for the attorneys?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know. I think we just asked for sort of a donation before. I don't know about the machines that calculate the copies and all that. I don't know. But you're right, a lot of things do need to be printed, either off a printer or the actual copy machines. Anybody want to? I don't, I don't know how to handle that. In the past, I don't think we've charged.
There's a, there's a copier over there that we, that was shoved away in the back, and we hooked it up, and it's working fine. Very old, probably need to relook at it. But there is a copier that works over there. And I think if we get, we're gonna have to get a couple of new printers, but that's not a lot of money, like twenty-eight hundred dollars, I think is what I think estimated, to get it up and running. It could probably print to that thing. The bar people in the past, I think they paid Um, the bar people in the past, uh, I think they paid twenty five dollars to get access to it, but I don't think they paid for paper, I think that was part of the service that we provided. Um, and really, truly, that's the, you know, other than the subscriptions, it's just the paper, uh, and the toner, obviously, for the copier. So toner and paper would be the, uh, primary expense, other than the yearly subscriptions.
Seems like I remember machines, maybe you put a core, a nickel in or something?
Oh, that's it, yeah, that, that was in, um.
Well, that's, oh.
Yeah.
In reality, when those attorneys and/or whom, whomever they send over, they're paralegal, whatever. That, uh, you know, doing a lot of research and, and a lot of, um, study on, on whatever subject they're after, they, that, that can cost a lot of money for that paper and I'm just trying to think of some way we can, uh, whittle down the cost to the, uh, to the county. You know, if, if we, uh, you know, if we could get it running, let's say, for instance, a running list of attorneys that will be utilizing the, uh, the law library asset, they all donate a room of paper, something of that nature, you know, uh.
We could, the other option is that if we, if they sign up to use it, we give them a dedicated password. And then based on, you know, that user, where, where'd my guy go? Based on that guy's usage, then we could calculate maybe, you know, some, uh, fee associated with so much a copy or something like that. I mean, what do you think, Matt?
No doubt.
Yeah.
I think all this is a big part of your evaluation.
Okay, well, we do have a motion and a second on the table, and, uh, barring any more further discussion, uh, what's court's pleasure, call for a vote? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, Judge. Yes, sir. Number three, from Mr. C. Uh, this is considered discussed, proof of plan for the disposition of the law book collection. Previously part of the law, of the Liberty County Law Library. Most of the books are obsolete or missing updates. And it is cause prohibitive to the county to update and maintain this old book collection. Books are no longer necessary for the purposes of Liberty County Law Library. Harold, what's your thoughts on this? I mean, they're decorative, I know that, you know?
Court decides to have no value, so you can declare a salvage, you know, we can look at it for a while, then we can do it.
Salvage, uh, any, any, any courtrooms need to have a whole stack of log hanging on the wall, you know?
Books themselves are very expensive to maintain.
They are, yeah.
Without a continuing subscription, they'll update them, uh, you know, they're really useless.
Can this be part of the way, uh, Judge, uh, Chambers' recommendation when he comes back this one?
Okay, but, but this is really, this is really a separate issue.
Yeah, it's, it's a separate issue and part of the problem we have is we collected all these books and we boxed them up. And there's a hundred and fifty book boxes clogging the hallways in that law library room and any. No, no, they haven't been used for years, so.
I dispose of them.
Yeah, we need to get them out of there, is, is my biggest concern, what's the quickest way we can get them out of there, um? I mean, I'll happily go rent a unit for it, if that's what we gotta do temporarily, but I need to get them out of the building. Uh, they're boxed separated, got their label, um. The only suggestion I had is they really are decorative, like maybe behind Weston's bench, we could put all those Texas books or something. Uh, they're very impressive looking and they're very, and they're in good condition for the most part.
True.
Uh, there have been some lawyers who have expressed interest that would be willing to buy them, so that's your option, you could sell them. Uh, we can use them in the courthouse for, uh, decorative purposes or something like that, but, um, I need to get them out of the, uh, building across the street as soon as possible.
Why don't you come back, next, give me some recommendations of what we can do with them, but, uh.
Well, I think Harold's got a sale coming up, don't you, Harold?
Yeah.
In August, so I think it always, if you're going to salvage it, you could put them on his list for August to sell them. Uh, but they gotta go somewhere, so at a minimum, we need to.
So you don't want to get, decorate, want to get rid of them?
Want to get rid of, I want them out of that building, y'all can do with them whenever you want, but, um, I gotta, I gotta get them out of that building, they're in our way, in a big bad way, and we're probably violating fire codes like crazy. Sorry, Bill, um, but yeah, there's a bunch of, I think I, I think we packed up a hundred and fifty boxes, so.
Good Lord.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Okay.
So we just.
Make a motion, would allow, and put them on the auction?
No.
Yeah, motion from Greg, second from Bruce to, uh, put them on auction block. All right, is there any further discussion? There being none, uh, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And motion does carry, goodbye books, okay. Um, let's see. Number four. Permits inspections, uh, Melinda, yeah, come on up. Uh, considering approved request from Buckeye Pipeline for release of bond for project on County Road twenty three seventeen in precinct two.
I would just pay that around, right?
Okay.
That's no problem, but I'll make a motion this day.
Alright.
Yeah, a motion from Greg, second from David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number five, uh, from, uh, Melinda. Consider and approve request allowing LJA Engineering to update current subdivision and development regulations. I know we discussed this and periodically, we do have to go back and redo these and look them over.
And all I'm asking is to allow LJA at this time to go over our ordinance, I mean, our, our, um,
Regulations?
Regulations and make suggestions and bring it back to y'all to, um, to update it.
Okay.
Short area.
Just, well, I've got a couple, um, we've got a couple that we've been working on and that we keep giving questioning on, and, uh, one of them has to do with retention bonds. And, uh, you know, we shot lots of sizes and we've got entrance into, uh, subdivision areas that are getting smaller and smaller, try to get non-accessed. They've got a trigger, so they're tearing the culverts up, you know, just different stuff like that. So I'm not, and the only decisions I need is just to allow them at this time to go over the, or the, uh, regulations and make suggestions and bring it back to y'all.
Making motion to approve.
Yeah, motion from Bruce, second Leon to approve, further discussion. Thereby being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, Melinda. Uh, uh, number six, uh, also from Melinda, uh, consider and approve the preliminary plat approval for Cunningham Acres. Section two with two various requests pertaining to ditches. Okay, let's talk about this then.
Yes, the first variance, and I've got LJA, if you've got any, uh, questions. Um, they want to do, uh, classify them as lot ditches, which would be a V ditch instead of our usual heat channels. Um, LJA, uh, said that the drainage is sufficient and meets our other county regulations. The second variance request is to have a ten foot maintenance firm instead of the minimum twenty foot that is in our regulations at this time. They're proposing a twenty five foot to thirty five foot easement along the block lines. Our, my and LJA's main concern is if we allow them to do these smaller areas, are you going to have trouble getting your equipment to maintain these ditches? Because if you go, you know, uh, ten to fifteen foot wide, I don't think, I, I'm not sure that the top ditches are going to be wide enough for our county equipment to access to keep them maintained.
Leon, what do you think?
I'm, I'm not for it. We have to utilize it, uh, right away and, uh, I'm not, I'm not for it at all. If they cut, we cut it down like that, it's going to be a nightmare trying to do our job.
I mean, it's hard enough to angle that, uh, that south moving there to get it right anyway, isn't it? Yeah.
Judge?
Yeah.
Our fire codes require twenty plus feet for fire apparatuses.
Right.
So that's, that probably would, uh, hinder apparatuses getting in there.
Yes. So.
Making motion to deny variants. Both of them.
Got a motion from Bruce, that is a second, Leon. Thank you, sir.
May I clarify, are you betting on the plat or just the variances? Just the variances. So we want to, so the plat?
How's the plat written up to the written up with these variances in it? Yeah, so yes, um, um, making the motion to deny both plat and the variances.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion denying both. Uh, motion from Bruce, same from Leon, further discussion. There's my, none, I'm tall for voting, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion carries, thank you, Jim. Thank you, Melinda. Okay, number, don't sit down yet, believe me.
I think this is my permanent spot.
I believe it is. Uh, considered approved request for payment of Schaumburg and Pope Incorporated Voice number one two nine zero one point zero zero dash four in the amount of nine thousand dollars for Ames sanitary sewer improvements to be paid with ARCA funds, that's pretty self-explanatory.
Making motion to approve, say aye.
Motion from Bruce, second Greg, any further discussion? Thereby being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, two more there, Melinda, don't cut off yet. Uh, number eight, considering approved variance request from Liberty County Solar on the FM fourteen oh nine project.
This is what I'm going to ask LJA next, thank you. He would, this is Manuel Mendoza from LJA, and if you want to do this.
Yeah, Manuel, come on up and, let her, let everybody get to see you today.
Good morning. Um, so, i- i- it's part of the list of the variances, uh, essentially, what, what they're trying to, to do is so ask for variances because all, uh, most of their improvements are, are within their property. Nothing downstream is being affected, uh, mainly so, first of all, one of the variances that we're asking for, more conservative, uh, Atlas fourteen, which, which is a, a rainfall event data, right? Uh, the, the normal Atlas fourteen that we use, just seventeen point nine, they're actually asked to increase that, just, which is good, right? Uh, and we're okay with that. Another, uh, variances of methodology, uh, under infiltration, uh, we're okay with that as well. Uh, also their analysis of, of their ten year storm and a hundred year storm, uh, versus providing, uh, what, what's required in the regs for two, five, ten, twenty fires. Again, this is solely in their, in their problem. They're not building any roads, they're not outplaying, uh, any downstream effects, right? So, and, and we're, we're okay with that variances as well. Uh, another variance request is, uh, they're, they're, so their existing ditches now are, are obviously flooded. Right, and it's, like I said, it's within their property, they're proposing to, to relocate those existing ditches, or be a postage, but still carry the same amount, meaning you're not going to improve it, you're not, you're still, it's still going to carry what it used to carry. So, and, and we're okay with that. Um, also, uh, they're, one of their devices is not requiring a maintenance firm on, on that same roadside ditch or, or, or outfall ditch that they have. Essentially, there's, there's, is no need for maintenance firms since they are all still within their property. You know? I think the last one was, uh, a culvert, culverts that they have, lost property, they have existing twelve inch culverts, the, the regs call for, I mean, going eighteen inches. Uh, unfortunately, that's, that's, the eighteen inch one is adequate enough to make, to be able to, to grade their road properly. The ditches are too shallow, um, the eighteen inch would always be a variant. So they're asking for, for, to, to maintain usage of their, their twelve inch, uh, size culverts.
And this would have no negative impact on all of this property.
No, sir, it's, it's all within their property.
Making motion to approve the variance.
Right.
Yeah, motion from Bruce, second Greg to approve this variance. Is there any further discussion? Thereby being none, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays.
Aye.
Okay, we've got, uh, three ayes. One nay. Yay. Mighty fine, that, that motion does pass. Uh, number nine, uh, considered approved X may ranch various requests by land plan engineering for detention upon design. I'm going to ask that we take no action on this particular item at this time till we have the opportunity for some further study.
Second motion, technical actions, clear.
Yeah, motion from Bruce, second Greg, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number ten, uh, from Mr. Poston, hey there, Mr. Poston, how are you today?
Oh, I'm doing great.
Good deal, okay. Considered approved a third amended and restated interlocal agreement for law enforcement, Liberty County Municipal Management District number one providing for the repayment of salary and certain costs associated with increasing the number of precincts, six, some constable deputies assigned to M and D one territory. Now, that's pretty self-explanatory, but it looks like we're needing to add some more folks.
Yes, we, we dealt with this, I think, uh, at last commissioner's court, it, uh, just managed to find a way back on it. Uh, it, it does need, uh, I think, some better, uh, more accurate numbers uh, for this, and we will be bringing those back, but I don't have those right now, so I'd ask to be tabled for a moment.
A motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, you got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce at the table. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. And David, you did abstain from the direct, I think, so that is a three to one. Okay, number eleven from Sheriff Raider, wherever Sheriff Raider is, uh.
He's not here, but I'm here.
Well, come on up, how are you doing this morning? All right, good to see you, Ms. Chitell, it's great to always have you in here visiting with us.
It's always good, my first time, so, good day.
At least I didn't get your parking space this time, it's okay.
Okay. It's all good.
Uh, consider approving a local agreement between Liberty County and the city of Dayzetta for the donation of two portable radios to Dayzetta Police Department for lawn, for purposes that mutually benefits both parties. Now, help me on this just a little bit, Bill, you're on there and you're listening?
Yes.
Okay, about the radio business, how far along are we on this right now? As far as distribution, and I believe the bill has been paid if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Dwayne?
So.
So, okay.
We're still working through all that, but, um, the, uh, the radios in the sheriff's department and the constables are, are completed. The radios that Michelle's talking about are, are extra radios that are, uh, the older models that we've taken out of the, the cars. And they're wanting to donate two of them to Dayzetta PD. Um, which will, i- if you pass this, will keep them active on the system. But, um, but that's, that's, that's it primarily, they're getting older radios, Judge.
Mighty fine. Ms. Chitell, can you tell us more about that, about this, or anything you want to add to it?
No, just that they, they need these two radios.
They do.
And we're not using them, so.
Yeah, I'm all for it to help you all out, all we can, just want to make sure that there's plenty to pass around.
Yes, these are, these are our own radios and they can use them, they can have them, I mean, because we're all set on the new radios.
Yes, ma'am.
Making motion to approve.
All right. Got a motion. Got a motion, David, uh, Leon, will they get, that was a second, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Got a same Leon, all in favor, say aye. Uh, likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, man. Number twelve, uh, from Mr. Poston and Ms. McCarty. Uh, consider and approve interlocal agreement between Liberty County and Harden Independent School District for one school resource. School Resource Officer. To be provided by precinct three constable. I had to add that R in there just in case, right? Okay. Uh. One question I have for y'all. What is the? The legislature's been meeting and they've been talking about adding a school resource officer to every campus. Is this correct? That's what y'all your understanding is? And that's going to be an unfettered mandate that we're going to have to all live with, correct?
Correct. Right, ma'am, sure.
Okay, well, somebody will.
Somebody will. Yeah, it could be. So I don't know if anybody really knows what.
There there is a probably a decision not given or statute that does allow um, for waiver of that policy. Um, but certainly there would be some work threatened under the court if it takes approval by a school board.
Or what you got on this that you can help us with?
Uh, I was talking to Catherine a couple weeks ago about this and and I also was familiar with. The uh, state mandating that each campus individually have a school resource officer. Or school marshal, you know, something something.
Right.
So I did a little research on that. And if the school files a waiver with the state, then that releases them from that obligation to have. A s- a school resource officer on East Campus. But right now Harden has two, you know, one's applied by the sheriff's office. Where did the elementary school? And then I have video that works at the high school. That's the base, the base of operations office. But you know, the high school is right there next to the intermediate junior high. So starting going down. That's going to be hard for him to get over there. But I did figure this super ten and I've already told Catherine about this. Uh, the superintendent has decided to file a waiver with the state, which is releases them from that that life that you could have one. At East Campus and also for us not to have law enforcement at East Campus.
Right.
So that's the that's the problem.
Yes.
And then just renew the mission's contract at school. That's all that.
Okay, Catherine, Matthew. What's your feelings?
So it's ready for approval.
Catherine.
It's ready for approval. All right.
You had a motion from Greg, second from David. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, can I say something, Joe?
Sure.
About the past previous item on the agenda about the radios?
Yeah.
I want to just give a kudos to Jesse McGraw. And uh, over there at the three twenty one block, Bill, you hearing that?
Yes, sir.
So, but Jesse McGraw been working his butt off to get all these radios installed.
Yes.
So I just want to give uh, to the court, let them know what what I'm standing on.
You know, one of the uh, one of the big things that we talked about, I know in twenty fifteen when Greg and Leon and I got here was. You got to do something to help out law enforcement and one of the big things was radios. And and thank you Leon. Thank you Greg. And thank you A R P A. Already a person that they came through it and. And gave us enough money to where we could go ahead and spend about two and a half million dollars on radios.
You know, it's better than spraying the cans.
I mean to tell you, it uh, I mean, Davis Hill does so much, but well, this other stuff could be working so much better, so.
I just wanted to give a prompt.
But I do thank you all for for jumping on top of that and making sure it all works out well.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All righty, number thirteen from Mr. Poston. Consider approve settlement agreements with Walgreens, Walmart and CVS in the opioid litigation.
Uh, and I had some uh, materials to be used with usual on that and that etc. I have to take that with me.
Okay, so let's move this to the end. Okay. All righty, number fourteen. This is a long one. Chuck, glad to see you here with us this morning. How are you today, buddy? Now you got to unmute so I can hear you.
I'm bad about that, Judge Nye. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. Good morning and gig them. Okay, um. This is uh, in references Trinity River Solar One LLC. Discussion and potential action shall occur. Pursued chapter three, one of the Texas Local Government Code, chapter three twelve. Of the Texas Tax Code and other authority regarding the following matters. A. A presentation by Trinity River Solar One LLC, which is the company. Regarding its one proposed solar energy and electricity generating facility project located. On certain real property totaling possibly twenty four hundred acres, more or less. And located in eastern Liberty County, Texas, near US Highway ninety east. And FM ten oh nine therein and two. Pending application for tax abatement regarding the project. B, consideration of approval of further negotiations, if any, by Liberty County, Texas. With said company regarding said project and application and C, all related matters. So Chuck, you want to lead us through the weeds on this near buddy?
Yes, sir. That agenda um, is a little um, off. Um, the company is not planning on, to my understanding, the company is not planning on making. A formal live presentation. Uh, they submitted uh, through their tax consultants. On or about May the uh. Excuse me, June the twenty first. A revised financial proposal. Based on the previous uh, consensus of the court to keep talking to them. And um. The other company Industrial Kilo LLC, I know that's on the agenda too. Uh, both companies use the same tax consultant, K E Andrews. Garrett Peters is the K E Andrews uh, staff member who's in charge of Trinity River Solar negotiation. And Mike Frye is the K E Andrews staffer in charge of Kilo. So um, Trinity River has by email that I forwarded to the county. Um, given a different financial proposal. And it was my understanding that the court was interested in discussing those confidential matters in closed session. Am I correct?
Yes.
Same. Uh, report from me regarding the agenda item pertaining to industrial kilo. The numbers are a little bit different, of course, but what I just told you about procedure today. Uh, regarding Trinity River Solar One would also apply to industrial kilo. So that when you go into closed session, you would be going into closed session for both of those matters. At the same time, you know, given the circumstances. Uh, under the uh, lawful uh, open meeting exceptions regarding attorney client consultation. As well as economic development negotiations.
Okay. Maggie.
We have that much to discuss in executive session.
So actually fourteen and fifteen, we probably.
Correct.
Need to move those along with a previous number, uh, thirteen.
There is an other executive session for both of those. Yeah.
Yeah, so thirteen, fourteen and fifteen. Do I even need to read fifteen? No, not really. Okay. Uh, so we're going to slide by those uh, with court's uh, understanding. And we'll move on to number sixteen at this time. Uh, from Ms. Chambers. Discuss approve the purchase of VR Systems. Star software for the management of absentee and military ballot requests. Including the six year requirement to keep information on and images of said ballot requests. In the amount of eight thousand two hundred fifty dollars. For the initial license training implementation setup. Including printers for labeling barcodes. To be paid from the county clerk records management fund. Hallelujah. The annual support and maintenance fee after the first year will be two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Lee, you want to elaborate on this some?
Okay, um, since we got elections back, uh, this last election set that we did, which was city of schools. We were hand entering uh, mail in ballot information into team and to e-pulse and making copies ourselves. We don't have any. System or database to keep them on. At the same time, we were doing that, the legislature passed a bill that said that we have to keep. The images from the application and the envelope that comes in. It's and the reason is there's signatures on there. We have to keep those images and have them available for early voting ballot board purposes for six years. So we need a database to help enter this information and track this information. This uh, software is really good. We talked to November counties that use it. Uh, it'll give us the ability to create a barcode once they come in. It'll automatically upload to team, automatically upload to e-pulse. It'll keep the errors down. And we did a few hundred for this little election. We've got four big guys coming in the next fourteen months. And we're talking about thousands. So we need a way to keep up with this. Uh, and uh, and process this information quickly and and uh, and this software looks really, really good. And I think it's just what we need and. Um, so I'm asking you to go ahead and okay it so we can get it up and running before this. November election uh, season starts and that means we have to start sending out ballots and stuff in uh, September. So we need it. Kind of ASAP, but it looks really good. Looks looks like just what we need. Um, I know that the state is changing their team system in twenty twenty five, but this is a certified vendor from the secretary of state. I think they'll keep up with it and um. Anyway, this is the one that uh, we like and we're praying good and believing you get it. And since we are keeping up with them and it is a records management function of my office, I think that. I think it more than falls under the records management fund criteria. So that's.
Dwayne, that okay with you on that record management funding? The uh.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion from Bruce. Second from David to approve. Any further discussion?
Um, can I make one more note?
Please.
Uh, this said company has a, is Ricky still here? Yeah. They have a voter registration system as well that's integrated. Uh, it's a little more pricey and uh, it's going to be a little more involved to install. He's going to give me some numbers and I'll try to bring it back. You can look at it for budgeting purposes if Ricky wants to consider it. But it does have a another section. Uh, that could be used by the voter registrar if he so chooses. So it's part of the same. You know, system. Um, there's more to it than just the part we're getting. That's my point, but it might be worthwhile looking at it for the voter registrar for the future. At some point, um, anyway, that's just that.
Thank you. All right. So we have a motion Bruce say from David. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, call for a vote and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That must be this carry. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you. Uh, number seventeen is from Mr. Gott, our county auditor. Consider and approve pay request from Grant Works pertaining to the uh, community development block grant. Number twenty dash zero six six dash zero one three dash C zero nine five. Housing buyout as follows. File number ID four four three revised. Uh, Ford's Liberty Title LLC purchase price sixty eight thousand plus estimated closing cost of five thousand. The total is not to exceed thirty three thousand dollars. And the way we go do these several times, I see no problem with this to you. Okay, what's the court's pleasure?
Prove.
Okay, Leon, was that a motion? That's motion and Leon and Bruce will give you the second on that and that's okay with you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Hmm. Harold, glad to see you here with us today. Number eighteen is consider and approve a one year extension of the HGAC. Contract HP zero eight dash two one. For disaster monitoring with Tetra Tech Incorporated extended until seven thirty one twenty four. Now, since it is tis the season, it is probably tis the season to make a decision.
Yeah. HGAC did two years ago, two and a half years ago. Uh, we chose Tetra Tech, Tetra Tech as the vendor. We've had them for two years, luckily, have not used them. And there's one year left uh, on the extension. Uh, the the part they do, the the category disaster planning under uh, HGAC, which could be a lot of things. So we we have a contract for monitoring this on the green, the very.
Hmm.
So we don't want to renew that. Which.
I think we need to renew that. Yeah.
That's one out. And I think HGAC will probably rebid it again next year.
Probably so.
For another year. Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Leon, you got a question?
Yes, sir. I was just making a motion to approve.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what. Didn't hear you the first time, but I'll hear you this time. So I'm going to give you that opportunity. Leon made the motion. Bruce, you want to make the second?
Uh, I think Greg does.
Greg, you got a second?
Yeah.
I'm kind of hard to hear it on that right side today, but uh, thank you. Okay, Greg got the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nineteen for Mr. C. Consider and approve payment to A one telecom for remaining. Forty percent due at completion of work at JP two building. Nine thousand eight hundred seventy dollars forty four cents. We've got done over there?
I think they probably last week was finished last week. JP sent over the invoices and it was too late to give it to the auditor's office. Someone had put it on here because I figured he probably needs his money. Uh.
Probably soon.
But everything's supposedly done. Or JP.
Everything look good over there.
Did you get the PO for or the furniture from P D C J?
Not yet. He just got something that claims. Okay. We're going to PO this year.
Yeah, but we need a PO now. Get the work started. Takes him so long. Uh, I do make a motion to approve.
So both motion Bruce and second David. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. And I got to say one thing, that is a very impressive building. I'm very proud for uh. For Judge Jimmy and I'm sure happy with the way it all turned out so far. Uh, number twenty for Mr. C. Consider approve payment to A one telecom for additional supplies needed to install a TV for JP two jury room. Uh, that's number six. I guess that's six hundred fifty four dollars.
Yeah, on this one, when he was finishing up, he needed a splitter and some more cable. Hook up the TV in the courtroom and the jury room. And I think the JP's office thought it was part of the original vote, which it wasn't. So when they sent these over about Wednesday, you know, it's Wednesday, uh, they don't have a PO for it. So. Cochran's office may not pay it for the weather part of the original vote, but it's it's included in all of that. So I put on here for y'all to. Even though I proved he may not pay it, but. Make a motion to approve exactly.
Motion Bruce, second from David to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion does carry. Uh, number twenty one for Mr. C. Consider and approve contract for vending machines at the jail.
Okay, this was on board many a couple of stores ago, uh, to give me and the county judge's authority to. Look at some of these vending machines and uh. Replace. We 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 don't currently, we have a machine, but we're not currently in a contract. It's uh, it went out and it got the. So what I did, there was someone real interested, uh, it's called Serves Snacks. And it's basically a teenager. Uh, boy that has started a business. He's at some of the banks. He has some ASAP well bonds over here. And they're interested because because the mother works at ASAP. She's in and out of the jail a lot. They have problems with the machines that aren't getting used, whatever. So she wanted to uh, ask the more work to let her replace the machines that are in there that don't have a contract on with a contract. Uh, just for that. So I just put it there just for that location at the jail for now. We'll look at the others. I don't think she's big enough to do the rest, but we'll we'll look at that later. But we'll look at other buildings that have on town and try to get current contracts. I did is, uh, I don't know who wrote the original contract, but I took it. We only added on the. The method of payment added on there that that'd be paid monthly. The method of payment added on there that, that'd be paid monthly and there'd need to be someone from the county there when they go to count their machines. They have to sign off that we got our ten percent and then the money goes over to the. The, the people at the jail know, know uh, this uh, water and then uh, trees. And uh, you know, they're, they're.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Uh, Lieutenant, you got anything to say that you'd like to add?
Just that we could get a copy of you down to the chair.
Yeah, you bet. Yeah. Alright, uh, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-two from Mr. C. Consider and approve additional radio equipment from Mother Rela. Utilizing the HGAC contract RA zero five dash two one. The cost is thirty thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars ninety-six cents and will be paid with our funds.
Mr. Herd Mueller, I think he's still here. He uh, I talked to Mr. Gott about this and I would ask him directly and uh, if you have any questions about. Uh, he goes with the, the original radios, it's additional.
Yeah, some of the patrol cars with the sheriff's department um, are gonna require remote heads. And, and that's what the, the additional thirty thousand's about. We have fourteen cars that. Uh, along with the DA's office that we're going to have to install remote type. Heads on those radios in order for them to work effectively. Uh, that's, that's what we're asking for.
Okay, no problems with that. Our funds, Dwayne? Yep.
Make a motion. We approve, Jay.
Alright, got a motion Leon, second David. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number twenty-three, uh, consider and approve agreement to contribute right-of-way funds between Liberty County and the state of Texas. Which obligates county to contribute one hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-two cents reflecting a three point two percent. Of the total estimated right-of-way cost of three million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. Uh, this was sprung on me about three weeks ago by the great state of Texas. And Tex dot saying, by the way, we need some right-of-way funds. And hallelujah, in checking with Dwayne, we do have some funds that are available.
That would be uh, land acquisition.
Out of our land acquisition fund. So, so we can pay these without having to uh, execute a note this go around.
Where's this right-of-way at?
Uh, Highway ninety. It's gonna be some more of that uh, expansion of the Highway ninety corridor. Um, you know, coming in from uh, the. Yeah, there was been five sixty.
Five sixty-three.
Five sixty-three, yeah.
Make a motion to approve there.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number twenty-four, consider and approve raising funds from two point five million to three point five million. Out of the American Rescue Fund for the Northwest Annex and start the process for construction. Now, we started on this project a while back, uh, with design and such. We've. Kind of stalled along here for just a little while until we finally uh, sat down and said, okay. What we have is big enough. Let's go ahead and get this thing done. The anticipation at the time that we had the initial plan drawn, uh. And of course, the land has been donated to us for this was around two and a half million. But we know that things have gone up in cost. So we'll edge our bets a little bit on this thing and right, uh, raise the number to three point five million. And we will sit down at this point and get with the architect and make sure that we have everything inclusive. And I'm talking about wires, televisions, uh, whatever else that we missed on the mission. Go around with the uh, with the sheriff's office when we built it. Lieutenant, you'll load here that I guarantee. Uh, this time, we're not gonna miss the boat on this go around. I'm asking that we do uh, raise the funds to three point five million. We do have the money intact we can use.
Make motion to approve.
Got a motion from Leon, got a second from Bruce. And all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. I think our next step is uh, yes, sir.
Like to go back and revisit number uh, twenty-three on this right-of-way fund stuff. When it, what, what is the projected date? Do, uh, they're planning on starting this project?
You know, the, the uh, design portion, Leon, is still ongoing. But their anticipation is the, the widening of it. I mean, let's look at the consideration of this. You remember when they widened uh, State Highway one forty-six coming out of Kima? Going into uh, uh, through that, that section. Just for an evacuation route, if nothing, I guess a better way of stating that. All I do remember is seeing all of a sudden Whataburger was gone and the road was widened. And it was at quite an expense. And what their anticipation in this is, land is not getting any cheaper. And they uh, they do have to widen this and they're gonna have to pay for this. And so their anticipation was gonna be a total number of over three point seven million dollars for the, the land acquisition portion. Of course, our side of it is, you know, the uh, well, our percentage, which would be a. Three point two percent total of the estimated right-of-way cost. Uh, we've already gone through this once upon a time on the Highway fifty-nine expansion too. Where we didn't have the money and we had to sign a note, uh, five-year note at fifty-five thousand dollars per year for a five-year period. I think we're in our third year now. So.
Second question is.
Okay.
What was the projected timeframe for us submitting our percentage?
Timeframe, I think they need their money now.
Have they indicated any kind of timeframe?
As far as what, uh, construction or as far as the actual acquisition of the property?
Our percentage of money.
Our percentage of money, I believe, would be now. I mean, they, they would anticipate that we cut them the check as soon as possible.
They're, they're in the process of going to get right-of-way right now. So they need the money now for, for. We just need some time.
I guess the question I'm asking, Jay, is have they given us a timeframe that our percentage? And they said, we need it by tomorrow or a year from now.
Well, in my last meeting, which was three weeks ago with Tex Dot. Uh, that number was relayed to me then and I asked them, when do you need it? And they said, we'll be sending you notification. Which I expect our notification has been received, which next thing I would think. Is they expect a check to be written to them in that amount. So that's the best answer I've got for that. I can check into it further, but.
Would you please?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Would you please? Would you, would you please do that for me?
Yeah, yeah. But I'm, I'm pretty sure right now is what they're looking for is their share.
Yeah, and ask them to put it in writing for, for the court.
Okay, I'm pretty sure that it probably is. Uh, probably somewhere between Dwayne's office and Matthew's office and my office. But I did receive. An email from them and this request that this be added to the court today. That gotta answer.
They can proceed with that. Put the design work without right-of-way.
Right, yeah. Anyway, for all critical purposes, that did, that was, that number was approved. But I will find the answer out for you as quick as I can, Leon.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, number, where are we? Twenty-five, uh, from Commissioner Karbowski. Consider and approve. Reimbursement of personal expenses paid for by Commissioner Karbowski. Which were necessitated for the litigation, defense expenses that stem from the charges and ensuing trial. Which were upon completion of the trial found to render a not guilty verdict in this case. Some thirty-five thousand dollars request to be paid out of twenty twenty-four budget as a final settlement. Uh, I would prefer we go into executive session in this, uh, if it's all possible.
Absolutely. I, I figured y'all have a bunch of questions to be on, you know, on what that looks like. So. I do have some thoughts.
Well, I think there probably is, it's a. An age opinion out there somewhere. Yeah, I would like to understand what that is on the. Yeah, I got you. So.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I don't have a problem going to executive session. Before we start this executive session, my question would be. Does Commissioner Karbowski have uh, the right to post this? Seeing how it's gonna be a benefit to him? Should that being brought, brought to someone else to post?
Think we should probably, if, if there are matters about this, which I, I know trigger my duty to confidentiality under that four rules. I, I'd rather not get anywhere near those lines. How about we talk about this in the executive session? I, I'll be happy to be frank with you on any number of aspects of this.
That's fine.
Okay, so at this point in time, we have several items that we need to move off into the executive session. Um, uh, one being uh, number. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Twenty-five. So at this time, I would uh, pass the court to consider that we move into executive session this time to discuss. We got a motion from.
Second.
From Greg. Bruce has the second, move to executive session. Any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Yes.
Matthew?
Yes, sir.
Okay, seeing how we're going in executive session on the benefit, Commissioner Karbowski. Should he abstain from these discussions?
He shouldn't abstain from any executive uh, session discussion.
I would ask, uh, if we went ahead and did the matter involving Mr. Kimbrough in executive session first. So we can get him in and out before we discuss any of the other matters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, Leon, we're gonna save number uh, twenty-five to last in executive session. So we can go ahead and. And work with uh, Mr. Kimbrough on the other matters first, okay?
Okay.
Alright, alright, uh, all in favor, say aye. We're already in the session.
Yeah, I'm gonna step away for just a minute.
Yeah.